We don't have the electronic buttons yet. Hafadez and mananas sidhuzis to all of you here and to the listening audience. The public hearing by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation is now called to order. It is about 8:00, 9:07 in the morning. And for the record, in accordance to 5 TCA, Chapter 8, Subsection 8, 107, notices of this public hearing were sent out via email to all the senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, September 18, 2015, which adheres to the five-day notice. And the second notice was sent out on Wednesday, February 23, 2015, which adheres to the 48-hour notice. I will note for the record that written testimonies may be submitted after this public hearing to the office of Senator Tina Munya Barnes at 155 Hessler Place, Sagatna, Guam, 969-10, or via fax simile at 472-3400, or via email at senator@tina munya barnes.com. Furthermore, if there are any other questions and wish to talk to anyone in our office, you can do so by asking for Bernice Rivera, Alan Cepeda, or Janine Cordero at 472-3455 or 56, and you can also call for me. Ladies and gentlemen, we did have a couple of items on the agenda. One was the appointment for Cecilia Ca. Perez, member to the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors, and Bill Number 152-33, COR, an Act to Appropriate Funds from Fifth School Year 2014 Occupancy Tax Hot Surplus Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau. I will note for the record that the appointment of Cecilia Ca. Perez, I want to keep the record open. If anybody wishes to present any written or oral testimony today, I'll go ahead and accept it. Ms. Perez has sent her regrets. She fell ill and could not make it this morning, but on her behalf, I want to keep the record open. And if anybody would like to submit testimony on her behalf, can do so by sending it to the address or fax simile that I had mentioned earlier. I'd like to wish everybody here a very good morning and God's blessings for being here. So that will go, oh, first of all, thank my colleagues for being here with me. Majority Leader Senator Respecho, good morning. Thank you very much for being here. Both sponsors to this bill, Senator Mary Torres. So we've got vice-partisan support for Bill 152-33, which will take appropriate funds from the 2014 Hot Surplus Fund to go, and money would go to the Guam Football Association for the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the FIFA 2018 World Cup and the AFC Asian Cup in 2019 with preliminary joint qualification matches. There continues to be additional funding from that surplus hot funds account, and that request from the organization to help with them was at $400,000. We did receive testimony from Guam Visitors Bureau, who said that they apologized they could not make it. Mr. Denait is off island for the Jatta Conference in Japan, but since his written testimony, also signed by the Chairman of the Board, Mr. Mark Valdega. I just received this, ladies and gentlemen, a couple of minutes ago, and I will just say that I will append this to the record. With that being said, we do have quite a number of folks that want to provide oral testimony, and I'm going to call you, I will call Mr. Richard Lyte first, Mr. Joseph Peta, and then if you don't want to speak and just want to, you signed in for oral support, just raise your hand, and we'll at least note the name for your support for the record. Ashley Beskar, are you here in support, or would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and take the names to the four that are up here first, and then I'll go down the list. Just a little rules of engagement before we start. If you guys have cell phones, please turn them on vibrate mode, so that we can give the opportunity for the presenters to speak clearly without being distracted. I ask the presenters to please state the name for the record, where they're from, or who they're working for, or why they're here, and if they're in support or not in support of this bill. Okay, with that being said, I will yield to the members present on the table this morning, and I think I'll start with Mr. Lyte.
Good morning, Hafadez, Madam Chairperson, Senator Rory Respecho, Senator Mary Torres, and your fellow committee members. Before I stop my oral testimony, I'd like to show you a short video, something that picture can tell thousand words, then I will continue with my testimony. Thank you.
Our last.
Thank you. My name is Richard Lyte. I'm the President of the Guam Football Association, an association that is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year of promoting organized soccer on our island. I believe our public-private partnership began in May 1997 with the passing of the Public Law 2433, which authorized the lease of the Hammond property to GFA. This cooperative effort has produced a multimillion-dollar facility that not only meets international standards, it has been a home for thousands of children, where they can learn the game in a safe and healthy environment as early as age four. It is also home of hundreds of adults. With the successful introduction of our Mom and All Girls League, hundreds of parents and children that have never played before have jumped at the opportunity to play and have fun. The participation and interest for the sport is now at all-time high. The stage could not have been set any better for the Matau, our men's national team, to participate in the FIFA World Cup 2018 and AFC Asian Cup 2019 preliminary joint qualification. Guam is in Group D along with Iran, Oman, and Turkmenistan. That was a very unfortunate draw. Considered Asia was so big, we're all the way in the East, and predominantly of the teams that we're going to play against is predominantly from the West. You can imagine how much it costs to travel from Guam to Oman, Turkmenistan, India, and Home game is unbeaten streak record. After three home games, FIFA article came out and said that Guam upheld the undefeated record at home. I think that shows a lot of merit about our Matau team. I'm here to tell you about the budget. In order to finish four home games and four away games, we need a budget of roughly about $900,000. It costs about $150,000 per match. Doesn't matter if it's home or away. The reason why is majority of our players are still a college student in United States. No matter where we play, we still need to bring them back to Guam for a week of training before we send them off the island for competition. Very fortunately, FIFA gave us $300,000 as a seed money to start this tournament. And then we're able to sold our tremendous home record after the first two matches in June. GVB stepped in and gave us another $300,000. So total of $600,000. Oh, I'm sorry, I correct my testimony. Total, it takes about $1.2 million, but Jeep FIFA gave us $300,000, so that's why we still remaining need $900,000. And very luckily, GVB stepped in and gave us $300,000 to help us to finish the third and the fourth match in this month, September. We have four more matches to go, especially three away matches and one home matches. I came in front of Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Chairperson. She was open heart to help us, and that's why we're here to do this testimony today. She offered us $400,000 from this surplus tourist attraction fund. I remember when I met her a couple months ago, she did mention to me, Richard, where you can find the additional $200,000. And I said, even though if I have to go on the street to bag it, I will look for it. And I'm very proud to tell you, I found the $200,000 without going out on the street to bag for it. Basically, we were being offered by a company called World Sporting Group, one of the hosting broadcasting companies that who do business with Asian football, offered Guam Football Association $200,000 by just giving them the right of broadcast the Guam versus Oman and Guam versus Iran match. Very proud to tell you the reason why is you can tell that people are locking on the door, want to offer money for Matau's success, want to broadcast the Guam matches throughout to the world, and gave us that funding. So we were able to successfully and have the full support from the legislature for the balance of the $400,000, then we were able to have the entire budget complete. It is important to fund this budget because we are right now tied with Iran, Oman, on top of our Group D. First time Guam able to achieve such record, and I hope that with the support of the government, since we got your support from the very beginning, the first day that build the facility. And the facility is the testimony of the commitment from our government of legislature and executive. Because you believe in us, we build that facility, we bring in the international cultures, we develop our children, and this is how we want to show the world what are we behind by our people, by our government. And without this budget, we might need to withdraw for the remaining matches, and I think that will kill every one of us in the belief of our island's youth growth and the sport. I'd like to end my testimony by acknowledging the late speakers, Tony Impinko and Ben Penkini, two of the GFA biggest supporters, who without their support, GFA would not be where it is today. The same is true with the current legislature and the executive body. I'd like to pass the floor to my fellow colleague, and I think I've speak enough already. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mr. Lyte. Mr. Cepeda?
We've basically broken down our presentation to segments, so I'm going to yield to Sherri Stewart, and then Jill, and then I'll come in. Yes, thank you.
Good morning. I thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you to advocate, to advocate the Bill 152-33. For the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the joint qualification matches, my name is Sherri Stewart, the Executive Director for Guam Football Association. As one watch a match, one ponder on many ways to view the impact, and it depends on which side of the field you're watching it from. From an operational point of view, the opportunity to be a part of a sport has increased in so many various roles, could be volunteers, coaches, staff, officials, sponsors, and stakeholders. This allows the community to explore and learn the different aspects about the industry while creating a career pathway. The impact of this game has moved the organization to a whole new level and an event while continuously showing our strong hospitality to our community members and our visitors. From a business point of view, the exposure has been enormous by branding our local sponsors, which has been seen internationally and domestically. The impact of this game has given our local community new excitement on sport and entertainment while vastly seeing the high volumes of exposure through live streaming and live broadcasting. From an island exposure, been captured in various mediums such as social media, news, radio, simply internationally with our counterparts to see the success of the event on Guam. The impact of this game has shown the world what a beautiful country it is, and to inspire and welcome more to come visit. From a social responsibility and community point of view, to provide a high-scale platform in sports entertainment, this had been the most inclusive in terms of bringing the community together, spectator that is from young to old, someone who is so knowledgeable about the game to someone who's never seen the game before. It also includes family. It naturally provides a community outreach where it welcomes them to a name recognition Program availability from the club organization, National Academy, Youth Nationals, and friendlies to coaching education to other education, this has created our calendar to be completely full of activities for a healthy lifestyle and learning. We expect this to continue to grow, and we look forward to the challenge to grow to keep everyone involved. Players, this is the most incredible, impressive impact that we've had on Guam is our youth. Already, I've been studying the numbers over the last several years of just how much of our players have come in to play this sport. Already, we have superseded our records in player participation just in the youth, and that says a lot. In 2006, we recorded 1,700 young players playing. Today, we're at 2,400. When we include now our adult league and the most infamous, the Moms League, we are getting worldwide recognition about Guam because of the Moms League. We went from eight teams to 16 in a matter of one year, and a lot of that is taking everyone attention. The impact of this game has inspired the youth to emulate the Matau, and as well as strong importance on life skills and academics on and off the pitch to be successful. Now, on a personal note, we've been receiving a lot of compliments as a result of hosting this World Cup, and I'd like to share just a couple. We have officials that comes in from AFC and FIFA, and they've been around the world very experienced in hosting events such as this. They couldn't get over just how passionate our people are and how hard we work to put a state world-class stadium, even though we don't have a stadium, but they were impressed. They said, wow, you have Iran who has the world's fifth-largest stadium that holds 120,000 people, and even they can't put on the same show that we do. And what does that say to us? We care. We love the game, and we're proud. Live streaming, when we did the first two matches, we weren't quite sure what would happen if we've never done it. After the match, people were floored, they were static, record-breaking, 25,000 hit right after the match, and we look forward to make that number grow. I received an email, short and sweet. It says, "Not only were the games successful, but you guys look professional. Congratulations." I don't think I've ever seen an event where it was pulled off with no incident, no problem, no injury, nothing. The last one is the FIFA, who is, his name is Mr. Gordon Savick, he's in charge of the World Cup, and he writes to us in compliments, and I'll read as follows. "I must really commend you. You and all your teams at GFA have been exemplary in treating our pillars in a timely fashion. I honestly do not see other areas that I could urge you to cover or improve. You've done all that is required so far. The communication flow is top class. One of the key pillars for success, the quality of exchanges with our opponents and on hands-on approach are all greatly mastered at your end to keep up the pace. Well done again. What an amazing start by your national team, top of the group." That means a lot coming from FIFA. So, in conclusion, this by far has been the busiest year that GFA has encountered, and the challenges ours to take and forge ahead for continual success. GFA and Matau are ready to achieve the success with you. By passing this bill, we urgently, we will surely forge ahead in success together to show the world and our island that this is why we stand together and represent the island we love. Thank you very much.
Hafadez, good morning. My name is Jill Espirito. I'm the Media and Marketing Officer for Guam Football Association, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to openly pledge my support for Bill 152-33, an Act to Appropriate Funds from the 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Funds to the Guam Visitors Bureau, and in particularly Section 2, to appropriate a portion of those funds directly to the Guam Football Association for the World Cup and the Asian Cup matches that we'll be playing. And I'd like to start out with, I do a lot of interviews with coaches, players, and one that stood out in my mind was, one reply was that, "If anyone in the world doesn't know where Guam is, then they're probably not a soccer fan." So with that being said, you know, we've had so much media cover our team, and through the years actually, and more so this year, particularly with the World Cup success. And it's actually making my job a lot harder because now all the media wants to speak to our president, they want to speak to our head coach, they want to speak to our players, and I'm arranging and managing that for them. So that's testament already that, you know, Guam is on the map right now in terms of soccer, and not just that, because of the home games, more people see what Guam has to offer culturally, and also, you know, with its beauty, and, you know, I mean, this is where people can also come to enjoy a holiday other than watching a soccer game as well. So I do have a couple of statistics. So I know Sherri touched on our live streaming. So after the first two games, we did get a record number 25,000 views to watch the game, and then with our Oman game just this past month, we've also reached just about that same amount as well. And with our top countries being in the Asian region, so the top 10 countries also included Japan, South Korea, Australia, which are some of our key tourism markets. So, you know, we are reaching out to our tourism markets and as well as to other places in Asia with a lot of hits from actually Thailand, Vietnam. I mean, it's going around, I mean, in the United States, everyone's family's there. So everyone was tuning into our game, and considering that we are tied for the top spot in Group D, that also says a lot about the soccer development, and it's taking, it's giving notice, I guess, to other countries as well who want to emulate that development. You know, they want to know, what is Guam doing to develop that quickly? And, you know, that's testament to the hard work of our president, all our executives, and just everyone at GFA, the players and coaches, and with the support from the government and the support from GVB, we can only go further. So with that said, I would like to, you know, thank you for the opportunity, and I would pledge my support for the bill, and I would like to, in the coming months, see that it gets passed, so then we do get the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, did you want to read anything from Mr.?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and put in record, I do actually have two testimonies that I would like to read.
Sure.
Okay. So, yeah, the first one is from George Stewart. He's from the Rovers Football Club, which is one of our clubs here in Guam with the youth team and adult teams. So, "Hafadez Honorable Senators, I submit this testimonial in support of the Guam Football Association and the appropriation of $400,000 for the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the FIFA 2018 World Cup and AFC Cup 2019 preliminary joint qualification matches. As a longtime member of the soccer community here in Guam, I can honestly say that personally attending the matches between the Guam Men's National Team, the Matau, and the visiting national teams from Turkmenistan, India, and Oman have been an absolute thrill for me and many other island residents alike. These games and the recent success-
These games and the recent success of our men's national team have gained global notoriety and become a huge source of pride for the island. It's not just soccer enthusiasts alone who have been following the team either. I know of many who really know very little about world football but have shown their support and admiration for the Guam team. Young and old, male and female, with very diverse ethnic backgrounds who call Guam their home, have been filling the GFA stadium to cheer on the Metau. To have our tiny nation of Guam taking on and beating some of the most populous nations in the world in the world's most popular game has been a source of inspiration for a lot of people. If you haven't been to one of the games, there's one more remaining home game when Guam takes on the number-one team in Asia, Iran, in November, and I would urge you to attend. You won't be disappointed and will find a huge crowd gathered to support our team. These games have brought a lot of people together and without any negative incidents that I'm aware of. How good is that? I also believe these games have provided hope and motivation for future generation of island soccer players to maybe someday don a Guam national team uniform. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to express my support for the Guam Football Association and the appropriation of $400,000 for the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the FIFA 2018 World Cup and AFC Cup 2019 preliminary joint qualification matches, and do hope that you also see the benefits that Bill 152-33 provides for everyone who calls Guam home." So, that's one testimonial, and I do have another one. This one is from Mr. Joe Roberto, the president of the Shipyard Wolverine Soccer Club. "Hafedeh Todes Hamzoo, to our dearest and treasured leaders of our island community, senators of and for Guam, Dankulu Nasizus Masi for allowing us, the Shipyard Wolverine Soccer Club, the opportunity to provide this written testimony in favor of Bill Number Our youth organization, which consists of nearly 200 kids as young as three years old to 17 years of age and well over 400 adults, are one small part of the proud GFA and the Metau team, and for the past 10-plus years, the generosity and kindness of Matthews Pothen, president of the Guam Shipyard, continues to allow our youth soccer club the ability to financially sustain itself. However, as the years come to pass, it gets harder and costlier to support our way of giving back to the community to hundreds of your southern youth and villagers. Bill 152-33 will surely and indirectly benefit our efforts. Most of us had witnessed the recent World Cup qualifying games hosted in Guam and cannot begin to stress the high level of excitement, energy, and enthusiastic positive attitudes all because of one sport, one game, and one team. While it's fact and true, this one team has the word "one" and it also has the word "team", this team, your Metau team, has influenced thousands upon thousands of our island residents to become just that, one spirit for one island, Guam. The commitment and sacrifice, oh, the commitment, the sacrifice, and the honor your men of the Metau team have shown has truly created a synergy effect we must capitalize on. The GFA and the Metau team have brought new meaning that defines team and teamwork. It is this team we are all a part of, and teamwork is what it will take to see it through. By the passing of Bill 152-33, it will surely help in your success as the world is currently watching our tiny island community's Metau team battle and win against the Goliaths on planet Earth. Please allow me to add, your southern and fellow islanders and at times most neglected part of the island will also benefit indirectly. The inspiration provided by your GFA Men's National Team, the Metau Team, created a new source of light and life for our youth club. The Shipyard Wolverine Soccer Club, based in and around the village of Talafofo, aka God's Country, continues to make do with what we have. At this moment, we lack adequate soccer facilities, we continue to use a baseball field not meant or designed for soccer, and must always contend with other positive youth organizations who simply try to do all that is good for our kids of the South. Your support by passage of Bill 152-33 will surely add to our motivation to grow even more, do even better, and become greater providers to our youth. Maybe one day, one blessed day, our youth soccer club will have our very own request to increase our level of competitiveness as shown and proven to be very real by your Metau team. Again, let's capitalize on the synergy effect created by your Metau team by following their example of a winning team. Additionally, and through the GFA and your Metau team, Guam is certainly receiving worldwide recognition as I myself, being in business, working with others as far as the U.S. East Coast to as close as Singapore, saying, "Wow, Joe, your Guam team is doing great." Is a good and marketing business benefit. Being in the business world, this is a plus that would surely benefit our company's staff and families as well. Can you imagine all the families that benefit in the private sector and the public sector? This goes without saying. Guam's island community, island people, and our island's youths will all benefit from the passage of Bill 152-33. Please allow your team, our team, Guam's team, the opportunity to win. Pass Bill 152-33. Again, this is a testimony submitted by Joe Roberto, president of the Guam Shipyard Wolverine Soccer Club.
Thank you very much, Jill. I'd also like to welcome my brother, Senator Frank Blas, for joining us this morning, and I know that there may be others that want to speak, but I'd like to ask my colleagues, are there anyone here like to make a statement or ask any questions of this panel here?
No questions, Madam Chair. I just want to welcome everybody to this public hearing. I want to recognize our chairperson, Senator Barnes, who has oversight over tourism industry, particularly her authority here in the legislature is to have oversight over the tourist attraction fund, and that's why you're seeing an appropriation that's not been referred to Vice Speaker Cruz's committee, who has oversight over appropriations, but more so in particular, this is from the TAF. So, if Senator Tina's blessing this initiative, I think it's as good as passed.
Thank you.
But I believe it's as good as passed because, as I told you, Richard, the other day, that it's easy to sell the work of GFA. You opened up with an excellent video showing a world-class sports facility there up north, and there are plans to have that same thing in the South. And that's moving forward as well, so I might congratulate you to the organization. But although you opened up with an excellent video for this hearing, I think the community is already well aware of what you have done over the years. Happy 40th birthday. And all one has to do is just drive up north and see hundreds, if not thousands, of families throughout the weekend being involved in this kind of sports activity. So, you know, this is a great testament to public-private partnership. When we provided the $600,000 matching grant through the efforts of our colleagues here and Senator Barnes, also tapping money from the TAF, that was an easy sell because it takes $1 of the TAF and matches $1 from FIFA, but the $2 that we get is not only $2 of end result. There's so much more that you cannot really quantify, but you just have to believe in your heart of hearts that that money is being very well invested. And the efforts of GFA over the years is a testament to that kind of investment, so you have my continued support. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Torres, please.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be here this morning. I think it's important for the community to understand too and to quantify what the true value of these dollars are going to get for Guam, in addition to all the implications that it has on the community and the goodwill and getting our kids off and inspired and all that. Jill, in the slide presentation, there were several clips of publications, and I spotted CNN, Wall Street Journal, was there The Guardian?
Guardian, yes.
And was there ESPN also?
Yes.
Were there any others on there?
Thank you for your inquiry. Yes, so actually, the slide presentation that we had is just a fraction of the media that covered Guam, and I did a couple of printouts here that I wanted to submit, and so it has several full stories that were published by international media. So, in addition to the ones that you saw, there's definitely some media from Japan, a lot of media from India that covered that match as well, and of course, New Zealand, as far as England, we had BBC cover us as well, and Sky Sports. So, I wanted to go ahead and present this after the...
And the reason I ask that is, as a media person, just to give people an idea of what the value of that exposure is, if you were to buy an ad on CNN, for example, a five-second spot ad, five seconds, what do you think that value would be?
Oh, well, companies actually spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get into international media such as CNN and Time Magazine even. So, considering all of the media that has covered Guam, I mean, we could easily say millions of dollars coming back worth of exposure about the island, and not only just about our soccer team, but about where Guam is, what its population, I mean, just a lot of cultural facts about Guam as well.
And that's what I want to highlight because, you know, when you look at legislation like this, there's always a tug-of-war for limited funds, and, you know, some people are sensitive to using funds from, monies from a specific fund for the purpose of the fund. And some people may argue that, you know, this is not the purpose of the fund. But when you look at the advertisement opportunities and the true value that this wonderful organization and your Metau team has brought, this $400,000 is nothing. It's not even a drop in the bucket of what you've done for the island and the value of the advertisement that you've generated for us. And for that reason, you know, I have no problem, no hesitation, supporting this bill. I also want, you know, on a practical side, too, you talk about inspiring a next generation. That's one of our main challenges on this island is how do you cure the social ills? And the best way to do it is to get them on track in something positive and something that they can aspire to, you know, something real and tangible. And I know, as a practical sign, it was kind of funny, I attended one of the, I attended both games, but at the last game, you had the Metau jerseys and you went out and the scarf, and I had a scarf and a jersey, and it was hijacked immediately. My grandkids, as soon as they saw it, took it up, my granddaughter put it on, my grandson put a scarf on. So, I hope your gift shop is still open because I'm out in a Metau jersey and a scarf. But, you know, that just shows how genuinely effective this program has been for the kids to, you know, to say, "I want to wear this now, and I want to be part of it." That speaks volumes. So, congratulations, and we wish you all the best, and we also thank you for your investment in our community because what you've done has truly been, and I know, Richard, you don't get paid for this, as most of us who are involved in it, it's a true labor of love and a labor that's very, very remarkable for our island. So, Sizus Masi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to you all. A simple question is, what will the funding be used for?
Senator, the budget cost to complete the entire four home matches and four away matches, it came out to be approximately $1.2 million.
Okay.
And we are already halfway through. We're very fortunate, FIFA gave us $300,000 seed money to start the tournament. And then after the second match, TVB jumped in and gave us another $300,000 from their 2014 budget that they able to reallocate for certain project that they appropriate but did not utilize the whole amount. So, we finished the four matches, and we need another $600,000. Predominantly, the money for the next four matches is because we have three away match and one home match. We have to go to Oman, we have to go to Terministhan, we also have to go to India. Predominantly, our player, I would say, still have 70% of them are resided in the United States because of they either paying professional or attending university. In order to bring them back to Guam, that's already one expensive trip and train them for about a week before we head to the West Asia, which is equal or maybe further travel than from the United States to Guam. So, I would say that 90% of our money actually is on airfare and training camp to prep the team and to participate.
Okay, so you say that there are three away games?
Yes, three more away game and one more home game.
Okay. Just to give it as a matter of perspective and in line with, you know, the comments and the questions from Senator Torres, and for, you know, the viewing public and those who don't necessarily watch, you know, the matches and stuff, how long does a match last?
A match lasts 90 minutes.
90 minutes. So, we're going to have the opportunity to have 90 minutes for Guam on one match, for Guam to be in worldwide recognition. And in that 90 minutes, Guam has an opportunity, really, to talk about and advertise itself for 90 minutes worldwide. How much will that cost us in as far as advertising dollars if we were to do it another way?
It would be phenomenal.
Phenomenal. So, what I'm getting at is that the return of investment in this $400,000 really can't be, is immeasurable for not just, you know, what we're going to be participating in, but what we're going to be able to present as well.
Especially on the November 17 match, Guam versus Iran.
Right.
Iran is the number-one ranking in Asia.
We're going to beat them, right, guys?
Well, definitely, with your support.
Yeah.
That, I will guarantee you, there will be a worldwide broadcast.
Yes.
That's why the World Sporting Group came to us and asked us to give them the right. And I thought, maybe I hopefully get $50,000, $20,000, but I'm a businessman, I always open my mouth bigger, I ask for $400,000. And they will instantly return with no hesitation, say $200,000 cash, and you don't need to do nothing. We're going to send the entire production team come to Guam and do the high-digital broadcasting throughout the world. So, that means throughout the world, people will watch why this little tiny island can able be on the top rank right now of the group with number-one ranking in Asia.
And this is in November?
In November.
So, we don't have to wait for a return of investment five, 10 years down the road?
No, you get instant return.
You see what I'm getting at?
Yes, thank you, Senator.
So, I'm looking at this as a matter of, you know, we provide this funding, the return of investment in this thing, takes that and multiplies that figure with things I can't even fathom and in trying to be able to address, you know, with this body, much less, you know, with our financial capability right now. Hence why I am in full support of this bill.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blas. I do know that Senator Torres does have one follow-up question for this panel.
Actually, Richard, I'm glad you brought up Iran because that also is an anomaly, to have a team from Iran come to U.S. soil. That in itself is a story, and it's a great opportunity for us to do more beyond marketing, not necessarily marketing, but just bringing awareness to our island on the world front.
Senator, two years ago, Iran made the first time ever enter the United States to play with USA for a friendly match, two years ago, and it draw the world football attention because since the USA Embassy, or what was so-called the kidnapping of our United States citizen, of the embassy employee in Iran... so-called the kidnapping of our United States citizen, of the embassy employee in Iran, there was no Iranian national team ever enter United States. The same talk is being talked now, right now, because the Iranian national coach is complaining every one of the player have to go to U.S. Embassy to receive the visa in order to enter Guam. So Guam be putting on the, on the world stage now, that is the second time Iran national team will enter back into the U.S. soil. And with the latest political turmoil within the Middle East, within that Iran promised to stop or maybe not producing nuclear bomb anymore, and British government already established the embassy in Iran, U.S. is looking into it. So actually, the outside of football, political talk about this team coming to Guam is another positive sentiment about U.S. and Iran cooperation. So you will see not only the football multiple media return, you will see a lot of about the United States and Iran, but utilize Guam as the land that they come to play this match. And I believe, unfortunately, we don't have so-called Guam visitor, or maybe the tracking. Everyone I talk to around the world, they click on Guam in Google and want to know what is Guam and where is Guam. And then my Indian friend, who is the Vice President of Asian Football, I met him in July 11 in Bahrain for the AFC Executive Committee meeting. He told me that no one know where is Guam from India, but now everybody know where is Guam, because they know that was the tiny little island defeated us. So, thank you, Senator, thank you for your support. I'm overwhelmingly excited, and I, I hope that the other senator who's not here today will hear our testimony and see our video, and then will support us. And I'd like to pass the floor back to the Chair Lady, to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Laine. I do apologize. Mr. Sepeda, your turn now.
No problem. I hope to quantify Senator Blas' inquiries with my presentation. My name is Joe Sepeda. I am the Vice President of the Guam Football Association. Good morning, Senator, Chairwoman. I'm here this morning to testify in favor of Bill, of this bill. This act will appropriate $400,000 to the Guam Football Association for the purpose of hosting, attending, and participating in the FIFA 2010, 2018 World Cup and AFC Cup 2019 preliminary joint qualifier matches. It's a long word. My focus this morning is to show how this act will support sports tourism in Guam and how the investment will return back to us. Guam football, in the past 10 years, has shown major improvements and development in our sport infrastructure, our organization, due in part to the successful partnerships we have with our soccer families, our clubs, our kids, our moms, our dads, right? Our national, our international partners such as FIFA, AFC, and EFF, the East Asian Federation, Football Federation, our local sponsors, and our government support, you folks. The sport of football, soccer as we call it here, has contributed to Guam's sports tourism. Through our successes and continued success, we are a vital component in hosting international matches, club visits, regional tournaments, and professional football teams' training camps here in Guam. With our participation, hosting, and recent success in the FIFA World Cup qualifiers, Guam has received tremendous worldwide publicity. This publicity has and will enhance Guam as a sports tourism destination. As of this date, and as a result of hosting two successful World Cup qualifying matches, Guam has been selected to host two international tournaments. The first is on November 7 to 11, 2015, here in Guam. The East Asian Football Federation has selected Guam to host the Boys Under 13 Festival. This includes countries such as Hong Kong, Chinese Taipei, Mongolia, Northern Marianas, DPR Korea, Macau, and Guam. EFF will support this event with over $400,000 for rooms, meals, transportation, and organization. That's an immediate return of the investment of $400,000. In addition, EFF also has selected Guam to host in July of 2016 another event. It is the men's and women's preliminary competition with a budget of over $500,000. This is a result of our successful hosting of two World Cup qualifiers. Here are a few of the events we have scheduled for the remainder of the year and 2016 with their estimated expenditures here in Guam. This you can equate to the investment. We have a Chinese Taipei women's team, the Hulun Taikai Chinese team, with an estimated expenditure of $30,000. This is one team coming here. They have to get rooms, they have to get cars, vans, they have to eat, they spend money shopping, an estimated value of $30,000. We have the Japan University that comes here twice a year, another $30,000. We have the Kaohsiung School, Chinese Taipei, Chinese Taipei is making major investments in sports tourism here. This is a boys' middle school team. We have a football club from Japan, Yokosuka, another estimated $30,000. Again, this is just the minimum, hotels, meals, rooms, transportation, shopping. Northern Marianas, our sister team, comes here twice a year. We have a collaboration with a group that brings out teams from the Philippines. There's a governor's youth athletic invitation from the PI, estimated $100,000. They come out to play soccer, basketball, volleyball, you see them every year. There's the Asian Christian School Conference, another $100,000. The Japan, the most important thing, though, is the continued support from the Japan Football League, the Professional League, the J League, and the Korean Professional League, the K League, which bring teams into Guam to train during the winter days, right? The values, large, Senator, you can see the immediate return, right? The continued success of participating and hosting the World Cup qualifiers with GFA's continued growth and development will only enhance Guam as a sports tourism. I only ask for your support of this bill. Thank you.
Si dos mas si, Mr. Sepeda, and thank you to the presenters this morning. I do have more. I would like to ask, if I may, I do know that some of you have your notes typed out or printed out, and I do, would love to have a copy of that marketing binder that you have right there that we can append to the journal, because I think that would be very good in convincing our colleagues that this is a worthy cause. Thank you. I will call the next panel up, and I do know that some of them just want to say that they're still here to support, but they, they don't want to speak right now. I'll just go ahead and mention their names. Earlier, it was Ashley Besgar, Kimberly Sherman, Michelle Nadeau, all here to support. Camden Nadeau also here to support. William Beneventi?
Walter.
Walter Beneventi, just here to support?
Your testimony.
Come on up. Nicholas Kabuhat, here to support. Jan Stamen, here to support. Okay. Ray Haddock, Attorney Ray Haddock, here to support and give written, I mean, oral testimony. Joe Roberto. Kyle Legosi, here to support, Legazi. And I have Ross Awa, here to support. Okay. Also, we have Christiana Martinez, Martini, here to support. Okay. Grace Martinez, here to support. Thank you, Ms. Grace. I will note for the record, before I have these two fine gentlemen present their testimony, that there are some members of the Team Matal here, Guam Matal, and I'm, I'm just very humbled at the fact to see them here, because it's about them making a difference for our island now. And if you could just at this time stand up to be recognized, so the people of Guam can see you, and if I can have our audiovisual guys bring them, I know, I see the captain here. So, so they're here. Thank you very much. If I can just remain standing, hopefully the audio can get them, the two gentlemen standing up. I know that the team captain, Mr. Jason Cunliffe, is here, and I know that Mr. Ray, Ja, yes, who's also here, patiently sitting here, showing their support for this bill, and it takes a lot. I know that the training and the work that you guys do is not easy, and the commitment you have for Team Guam, Team Matal. I just want to say thank you, thank you for being here to show your support to the officials who continue to be behind the scenes to, to work all the, the necessary prerequisites in order to run successful games and programs. So thank you for being here and continuing to believe and, and honor in them. I caught that in your, in your photo, where you talk about team and believe and to honor and, and to play with glory and respect. So thank you. So, Mr. Haddock, I'm sure you're more than welcome to start. Just state your name for the record, where you're from, and if you're here to support or oppose.
Good morning. My name is Ray Haddock. I'm the President of the Crushers Football Association, and I'm here in support. What I wanted to go over is not necessarily the financial gain that Guam will get from this, but a deeper gain. We all know that, you know, someone's willing to pay $200,000 to re, to broadcast one, one, one game of, of the GFA's hosting an event here on Guam. The value of, of this exposure is worth millions. And, but what I really wanted to explain is, is I've been, I've been coaching for about 20 years, and during, at the end of that 20 years, I realized, you know, I've put in hundreds of hours every year and thousands of dollars into my soccer club, and I was wondering, is it worth it? And that's probably similar to what you, as senators, and the other senators are going to wonder. You know, when we look at this money, is, is it worth it? And after contemplating, you know, what, what really happens to these kids, what, what, what type of impact do we have? After speaking with our coaches, and we thought, you know, what do we really accomplish? The four-letter word came to us: hope. And what we instill in these kids is hope. We train them, we take kids that may be shy, may not have big aspirations, but we give them skills, and we show them, with these skills, you get better. And once they see themselves improving, they have hope. They know when they work hard at something, whether it be soccer, whether it be education, that they'll exceed in life. And personal experiences, I've had my son that when they would sing "Happy Birthday" to him, he'll hide under the table, shy of everyone. Started playing soccer, and now he does interviews on TV, he does interviews with the newspaper, very eloquent. But it really comes down to hope. You know, when you are able to give people a role model and give them the skill to improve, you change our island, you change our youth, and you instill with them this hope. Now we're at a, at a crossroads. We have our Guam Football Association that's desperately in need of funding to help our national team move forward and realize their dreams. And these aren't dreams of people that just came to Guam for a little vacation. They're out there right now improving their lives, and they're homegrown. I remember kicking ball with Jason in front of his house when he was probably eight years old. Ian Mariano, I remember coaching him when I was in the Sidekicks. And, you know, the list goes on and on. We've had some of the national team just within our Crushers club. These are our boys. You know, these are our kids. We're going to let their dreams live by providing them this funding. And by letting these kids have their dreams fulfilled, you're instilling hope in a whole new set of generations. They could look at them and say, me, on my little island, if I put my heart and I put my work and my effort, that I could be just as good as them or better. I don't have to be part of a billion doll, or billion citizen nation, or part of the U.S., or part of China, or part of, you know, any type of big country. I could work hard here on my island, and I could beat them. And that's why I bring this testimony, is to know that not only is there a financial gain, but you're really going to help the children of our island and instill with them a greater sense of hope by allowing our Guam national team to realize their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Attorney Haddock.
Good morning. My name is Walter Beneventi. I'm here today to offer my support for Bill Number 152-33. I really didn't write anything down, I just put talking points. My perspective is, I'm a parent and a coach, just like Ray, I've probably been doing it for five years. For me, it's always been about my daughters, or my girls, all of them, at one point in their life, they played soccer. They were these young girls that didn't want to do anything, they were shy, they got on the field, they scored their first goal, their faces lit up, and now they're, they're out there, going to college, going to school. Their grades have improved. What I see now that you don't see 10 years ago, we've got a lot of our FSM citizens now participating at the GFA. We're bringing the community closer together. Without these people back here, the GFA, a lot of kids would be doing absolutely nothing. Our youth sports are, you know, on a decline. Usually, it's money, right? But with the GFA and, and the people there, they've been able to build this world-class facility up there and get the whole community involved. And that's something that I haven't seen in any other sport on Guam. And the number-one thing we got going with us is young girls participating, right? We have the Women's League, the All-Girls League, our youth league is co-ed. No one, no other sport can boast that kind of participation. But we do it with soccer, and the GFA has brought all of that. And I, myself, I'm 100% in support of this bill. Like you said, you will get your return tenfold. You're talking millions of dollars in advertising. We're global right now. And if you put it in that perspective, it's, there's no, I can't even imagine, like Senator Blas was saying, that you can't put a number on it. It's just a lot of money that's going to be made, and you're, or you're going to pay, you're going to get a lot of advertisement for Guam, and we didn't even pay that much for it, it's tenfold. I'm, I'm rambling right now, but I'm here, because for me, it's, it's emotional for me. I love the game. When I first started, my club president, the ASC Islanders, she said, "Your daughter can't play, we don't have enough coaches. If you want her to play, you need to coach." I got sucked into it. And I love the game now, you know? I love it. I eat, sleep, and think soccer. That's all I do. With the kids now, you ask them, you know, they recognize our Matal team. You ask them, "Who's the captain?" He's sitting back there, his name's Jason Cunliffe. They know him. They have their own favorite players on the club, you know, and it's like our own professional team, right? And I'm just here to lend my support and hoping that all the senators on this panel will put their full force behind it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. And before I open up the questioning portion to my colleagues, I just really want to say thank you again for taking the time to be here this morning and spending your time to support this effort that my colleagues here right now who've helped co-sponsor the bill with me, it was because they believed that, that it would make a difference and that the return in investment would be more than tenfold, that they put their signature to this bill. Working closely with my brother, Senator Frank Blas, and Senator Mary Torres, having that bipartisan support to say... that bipartisan support to saying, we're going to do this, it may be a lot of money, we do know that health, education, and safety are very major priorities, we need to fix roads, we need to have sidewalks and all that, but this is just as important, if not the return, the vision of hope, Attorney Haddock, that you mentioned, the vision of hope in making sure that our players have an opportunity to play here and represent their island, this tiny island of 160,000-plus people here, only compared to the Goliath of millions of folks out there who have that kind of industry that can buy something that we don't have. So the $400,000 request that's being asked for today may be a lot to us, but the return of the investment truly gives that hope that we will succeed and that, you know, yesterday I was at a send-off ceremony, and my heart was really torn about having our people again having to go out and defend the freedoms that we have today. And as I was looking at the video and saying, Lord, I will pray for them every day until their safe return, like the governor said, when we have a big welcome-home barbecue for you guys, because all of you guys are going to come back home after what you do to defend our country. I looked at the video and it said, locally owned, globally known, and that stuck. And as I hear the presentations today, truly, truly, this team effort, the effort of the players, Team Matal, working with all the GFA, working with the families, noting that your children know who our players are, our locally grown, owned players are, that is something to be proud of. And I want to say, I will work closely with my colleagues. I will leave the record open for the next couple of days. We do have a session the second or third week of April. That would give us, October, October, that will give us time to expedite the committee report through, and with all the information given, will give our colleagues the time to talk to each other to try and get a unanimous support for it. I will note for the record, there was a letter of concern, not in support of the efforts, and rightfully so. Like I said, sometimes it's very hard when we have to look at education, safety, and health as our primary efforts of getting things through, but I think that this legislation far exceeds that when it comes to the bigger picture of not just bringing tourism here, but us representing Guam to the rest of the world. So Senator Torres, you have any questions, any further comments? My brother, Senator Blas.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony. And thank you very much for, you didn't get, you know, corralled into it. That was done out of love, okay? Your daughters are watching this, they just don't want to make, can put you through this. But, you know, Attorney Haddock, you know, you mentioned the four-letter word of hope. And I like to add to that, another four-letter word, it's called life, okay? We've given life to a sport that, you know, it's now, you know, I'll be honest, I am a fan and player of the other football. Okay? Hence why, if this was around, I probably wouldn't have my sciatica the way I have it today, okay? But I'm sure that everybody on this island has seen the traffic jams that you've caused on the weekends and enjoy it. I think it's one traffic jam that I don't, don't not appreciate because I know what it is. It's cars filled with families with kids, and they're bright orange and bright green and bright purple, and I think you guys have created new colors with regards to uniforms, with as many colors as I've seen out there, all anticipating and all wanting to be a part of something, you know, that they enjoy. And now because of gentlemen like you, now it's something they can aspire for. And that's a great thing. So, you know, along with the hope of wanting to be able to be somebody, it's now giving them life. Life for families, you know, who once never did anything together, you know, and now savor and want to be together in the weekends. Life to kids who recognize, in order to be able to achieve things, you've got to be better at what you can, and here's the mechanism, and here's the vehicle, and here are the, here's the field to work on that. And, you know, all of that, I want to say thank you to the two of you. Ray, Matal exists because you were there, you know? And Mr. Beneventi, Matal's going to continue to exist because you're there, okay? So please, you know, I mean, as much as you want to support this, I think I, I'm very privileged and honored to be able to sit here and to see the kind of commitment that you have given to our kids, and I want to say thank you. And my expression of, again, my thanks is, I will work to make sure that this Bill gets passed.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
If there's any doubts, as a sincerity of all of us, we're all one really big soccer family, and if anyone has doubts, I would just encourage you to have them come on a Saturday and see our extended family and see how we all work together as one big unit to make kids have a better experience in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Attorney Haddock. With that being said, the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation will call the appointment of Cecilia C. A. Paris, member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors, publicly heard. The record will continue to be open so that we can receive testimony from those in the community who wish to support her testimony for Guam Housing Corporation as a Board of Directors, but also that Bill Number 152-33 COR, which is the Act to Appropriate Funds from Fiscal Year 2014's Hotel Occupancy Tax, which is the hot surplus fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for the purpose of appropriating $400,000 to FIFA, I mean Guam Football Association. Did I say that right? Guam Football Association for the qualifying games has been publicly heard. It is about 10:30? 10:27 right now, this media, this public hearing is adjourned. Si Dzus Masia, God bless each and every one of you. Have a wonderful week.